...one point one.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, nine point one is Project Flash. That needs to stay.
Alright, I stand corrected. Nine point one stays. So, let me recap. We'll strike six point two. We'll strike ten point one, ten point one point one. We're gonna strike-
You're striking ten point one. The third read down Golden is on the school board. I'm at twenty. Is that the one you counsel?
Yes, sir.
Your counsel's winning that.
Ten point one, ten point one point one. I'm sorry. Leave ten point one.
I thought so.
I see what you're saying. Alright, one more time. We're gonna strike six point two, ten point one point one, fourteen point one. And then in item thirteen, under thirteen point one point one, and there was a date eleven, one nineteen, we're gonna change that to eleven fifteen nineteen. And with those corrections and alterations, what is the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I move with the approval of the, uh, consultant. We're gonna denote it, uh, changes.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four, public hearings. We have no public hearings scheduled this evening. Item five, public comments. I'm gonna read real quick. This is from the decorum policy set from previous council before Councilor Williams and I. "The public comment period shall be included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to thirty minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. If there are more than six speakers, time allotted will be thirty to forty-five minutes." That being said, do we have some people sign up for public comments this evening?
Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Heffler, Heather Grimmer.
Ms. Grimmer?
Uh, on the Arts Council.
Yes, um, hello, uh, everyone. Uh, my name is Heather Grimmer. I am a newest member of the Hampton County Arts Council. And, uh, we have so many, uh, new and exciting developments going on with the Arts in Hampton County that, um, it's absolutely important for me to come here tonight and give everybody a quick update on what's going on and, um, hopefully, um, one of the public members here too will be excited about all the things that are happening. Um, first of all, uh, I want to thank you, uh, for your support and the support of our administrator and all of the, um, progress over the years. Um, when I came on board, uh, as the newest member of the council, I was trying to open over the disaster and now a lovely, functional place for the community, um, get together for all kinds of things. And we're deeply grateful, um, for the work that's been done over there. Uh, we were very fortunate, um, last month, uh, to host, uh, Chamber of Commerce meetings. And our first, uh, art show over there since the renovation's been approved. Uh, there was a huge stuff. We had great coverage in the local papers. And I think everybody had a great time. Um, as my understanding is going to draw our line, it's going to be the facility for longer upcoming meetings. So, um, I believe that building is going to, um, wasn't in for itself and rental revenues will be go forward. It'll be a, a great asset to us. Um, and finally, this month, um, we also wanted officers to come in and ask, we would like to admit that could be moved up because our chairwoman, she's done just a tremendous job. She was a pillar of the community. We were very fortunate to have her. Um, as well as, uh, John Wright, who's our vice chair. And a lot of folks in the community just know Mr. Wright as the art teacher here at our local school, but he is a, uh, acclaimed artist in all parts of life. Uh, he works out of thousands of dollars, an athlete all over the United States, in the form of a curator of the city in Columbia. So, a real asset to the community and credit to us that we are forward with this project and have committed staff trained with this. Maybe small, civil liberties and secretary. And then they created the position of public information officer to delegate somebody to get the news about all of the new things that were going on. And that was delegated to me. So, I am now the public information officer for the Arts Council. And we do have a new Facebook page, um, Hampton County Arts. And so, if you haven't also found Facebook, we do the great way to do that. All the information about what's going on. And we also have built a website, hamptoncountyarts.org, um, to, uh, to get any information out as well. Uh, later this week, um, we are very excited to host the Palmetto Theater, um, compliments, Philip. Uh, there's a duo, Double Shot, which plays, uh, great beach music, um, special traditional part of South Carolina folk life, um, with the shag dancing. And, uh, tickets are still for sale. We hope we're gonna sell out, uh, the crowds for that. It's a great wholesome, uh, family-friendly event. Um, and there was really money for, um, all the different things that we do on the Arts Council. Um, but, you know, the vehicle culture can't be had. We can't, uh, did a state of honor. That was a, a, a great project to be part of. Um, moving forward, uh, next week, um, the first installation of the Yamamke mural project. Um, we're having a dedication of that first mural, uh, next week, um, uh, October thirtieth at five P.M. Now, for people that aren't familiar with the Yamamke mural project, um, it started, um, as a movement to, um, get some arts to recognize the history of Yamamke and its role in the development of Marine Corps. Um, every Marine recruit from nineteen fifteen to nineteen fifty-five came to that people in Yamamke, South Carolina. So, there they went on to some of the biggest battlefields, um, in the history of the last century. And, uh, we all owe them a great debt. Um, and that's a lot there to commemorate that important history, um. There's a couple markers on the phone in the interact station, but if you're not inside the interact station, you can't really see it. We now have a very large, uh, twelve by twenty-four, uh, paintout there directly across from the interact station. Um, two other large installations are scheduled to go up. And, um, they've all been privately sponsored by members of the community. We felt it was important to let the town, um, that history, uh, more artists are coming forward, wanting to part with businesses, but I expect to see that project grow.
Just, we got to get to your wrap up.
Yes, I got two, three more things in the temple. Our new community children's choir, we're starting out. That starts in November. And we have three performances coming up in December. So, we'd be very, very good.
Alright, thank you very much.
Louis Hardison, Airport.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Louis Hardison. I live here in, uh, the town. Um, I came tonight to talk about the airport. And, um, I wanted to start out by saying, I came here in nineteen eighty-four, about thirty-five years ago. And one of the first places I went to when I got here was the airport, because I'm kinda, I like airplanes, I like airports. When I got there, um, to say the least, it was, um, it was kinda depressing. Some of y'all may remember the little yellow airplane out on the runway. Uh, for longest time, it didn't buy or anything. And I don't know what ever happened to it, but anyway. Um, that was some of my first time getting the airport. Um, the airport is a great asset for the county, Hampton County. It's something that we have out there. Um, and I, and it's something that I think we need to nurture. I think it's something we spend money on. I think we need to do everything we can to keep it. Um, uh, the airport, uh, some of the reasons why we should nurture it, it brings people to the county. It brings, uh, people in here. That brings business and economic development. Um, we had somebody coming here just last week, flying in to go to visit down at the, um, our, uh, business place down there in Yamamke. Um, and we're having more people coming in, stopping by and looking at businesses, looking places to go. Um, we need, we need an airport for that. Uh, people are coming in to visit. Uh, they'll stop, they'll buy gas. Um, they go hunting. They stop there to go down motorbills. Um, just, I think it was about a year, year and a half ago, we installed fuel pumps at the airport. And before that, we didn't have anything out. We had one little small building. And, um, we were surprised at the number of planes that have come in to get fuel. Uh, we went from just a plane coming in once in a while to we've got a steady stream of planes coming in to buy fuel. Um, so that's just to go to show that we can bring planes in here. Uh, one of the things we wanted to do is build hangars out at the airport. If we, we feel like if we build hangars out at the airport, we'll have people base here. And those people will buy fuel here as well. So, um, I think our fuel, I believe our fuel sales will go up when we have airplanes here. Um, a lot of people that we get now are just transit people through, going from up north, down south, and they see the gas prices and they stop by and buy fuel. But if we can get hangars there and we have people base here, I believe we'll have more traffic. Um, we use our airport for a lot of things, um, that a lot of people don't realize we use it for. It's kinda out of sight, out of mind. Nobody sees the airport. Sometimes we don't want to go out in the airport. But the airport is very, is a, is a very good thing for us. Um, I understand our airport is the backup of a female disaster. People don't realize that they use that for that. Uh, we use the airport for emergencies, times of emergency. We have a medevac helicopter coming in. A lot of people don't realize that. Sunday a week ago, we had one land that took a fella out of being in accident and flew him out to, I don't know if he went to Savannah or Augusta. Um, we don't see it happening every day, so we don't realize it, but it's very important that we keep that airplane. We even have medevac airplanes that come in from, um, to transport people like long distances. Um, sleds still use this our airport. People don't realize that, but they spent their time, time doing stuff. And we have fuel for them. They can buy fuel. Before, when we didn't have fuel, there was no reason for them to stop. They would just go on the elevator. Now that we have fuel and they're in this local area, they can stop and buy fuel here and whatever they need. DNR can use the runway. Safari commission, they're always out flying, especially in the fall of the year when everything gets dry. Um, they'll fly planes down here. They need fuel. They stop by St. Paul's. The planes at the airport buy fuel. And I understand if we build hangars, they're gonna try to put airplanes in our hangars. We have a farce of planes down here, um, in Hampton. Um, we're right here behind the National Guard. National Guard, sometimes the helicopters coming down, which will be convenient for them. We didn't have fuel for them before. So, this is something good, good for them as well. Um, business people start coming into, um, make a different business place, uh, relocate here, or even go back to businesses, uh, spend money here. Uh, we have several companies that use, um, the airport, that crop dusting, do fertilizer trees. They do that certain amount of gear with selling fuel as well, and also, um, charge them to come in and use the, the airport. Um, another thing we discussed one time prior to this was, um, trying to get kids from local high schools involved in aviation. Um, and we discussed this program. We haven't, you know, the high schools, we've been discussing trying to get them. But there's a good program out of Charleston, the Civil Air Corps, and they come to different airports. And they'll take young high school kids that are interested in flying and aviation, um, and trying to help them to get involved in that. And, and I think it's something Hampton County may not have had before. I mean, there's people here that their whole life they haven't, they don't know anything about airplanes. They don't know anything about the airport. And it's something I think we need, um, we need to, you know, get kids involved in and get people involved. I'm, I'm worried. Um, also, we've talked with the animal shelters here and there, interested in using our airport to, um, thank animals at the different shelters that are not, not, uh, local shelters. And they'd like to use our airport for that. And then close them. The only reason I'm saying this is because I believe, Dr. Holland's word said last week, he said, "If something happens, that one airport will never be known." And I believe that. Um, so I think it's something that we need to take care of. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Rhonda Hardison, Airport.
Those of you connected here that just heard me talk about my husband once in my life, he had the last words, could be such a pro, a point that I'm gonna make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Uh, Mr. Wynn.
Tonight, I'd like to bring up a little, um, helpful made in about the way we petitioned at the time allowed for the notice of the meeting. I think we're out of order by waiting for Friday afternoon. The itinerary already set up for Monday before the meeting and plan is set by Wednesday. The law says twenty-four hours working days, that's two week hour days, Monday and you don't get it in the Friday afternoon. That's not working all, working hours. And then, hopefully, Monday, you have work to do. But, um, threatening to freeze, not giving a talk on new locations, so, in my opinion, pushing things through when nobody's here, but they don't know about what's going on. And I need folks to, if we bend until it's redone by Wednesday and put up, so wait a Thursday afternoon. Sure that you have your twenty-four hour working hours now. You're not accomplishing this, and I think correctly shows that it's not. And I think it's highly out of order. I think it's the law. And in my opinion, you need to correct it, or we need to go with the public. And that was correcting this situation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, everyone. Here goes the, um, gentleman spoke ahead of, uh, Mr. Wynn couldn't have said it better that this airport is a, is a major economic development in this area, in my opinion. I mean, contrary to, uh, some rumors that are going around, I support this airport, the expansion that possibly are gonna blow down here in the near future. Uh, still go back to the, uh, the people that don't know, there's litigation in the county over the airport use and, uh, the county council. And what I'd like to do is read to you a court deposition from Jim Daniels, which is the economic development coordinator for Hampton County, which would basically be the same position that, uh, I think Brandon Strickland holds today. Uh, question from the county attorney, uh, the county attorney with the actual, uh, litigation. Question was, what information do you think would be helpful in this case? The answer, fact that he, that he was promised, me and myself, the promise that he would have access to the airport runway for testing with his fire trucks that he located here in Hampton, South Carolina. Who promised him that? Hampton County Council did. Uh, I can go on and on and on, but based with the time constraints that we have, uh, in my few minutes, I would much rather just, uh, leave it at that. Uh, these are court transcripts that, that any of one of you can get through the, uh, as good as straighter or possibly, maybe you already have them. I just wanted to make sure that the word got out of how the court transcripts came out. So, questions, I'll be glad to, um, I'm glad to answer. But again, the gentleman spoke a few minutes ago about, um, economic development coming into Hampton County. That is the reason why I came here to visit this airport. And we promised access to it.
Mr. Jones.
That being said, excuse me.
Uh, if you, uh, we're not gonna do the question and answer tonight, but you've got your full five minutes if you wanna continue.
Yeah, I think I, I think I've said all the needs to say, you know, for the public to understand my frustration with what I've gone through with this, this litigation, uh, for the last two and a half, three years. Uh, this council, three weeks ago, turned down the last offer that, uh, Miss Elliott and myself and our attorneys, your attorney, had laid out with the, uh, with the Judge, uh, Judge Butler's approval. And you turned that down, which is your, your right to do so. But now, with that being said, now we're being forced into court, uh, here in the near future, probably in the next four or six weeks. So, other than that, uh, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer.
Uh, we're not gonna do the question and answer, but like, uh, we, we appreciate it. If you had anything that you wanted to add, and I think you've got a couple more minutes left.
I think, I think I've said all of these. You said it.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Um, Ray Ward.
My name's Ray Ward. I'm a captain of the airline, former marine, land and aircraft, there's by all over the world. I'm retired. I got my own airport in the middle of the country. But I volunteer my time to help the county make decisions on the airport. I grew up in Oklahoma, in a county very much like this, mostly pine trees and farming. So, there was farming, sawmill, and that sort of thing. We got grass on the ground. And all that grass comes runway. I learned to fly, got all my license, paved my way through college, filed. And later went on to the airline, dropped it, and that's how I paved my way. So, what happens when you have an airport, which for most members of the county, don't even know you got one anymore than you know you have water. Five ton unit city. You just know that the water comes out. But an airport brings businesses. That little airport where I grew up, they've got three business jets, four turbine airplanes that the businesses in that county use now that it's grown up so much, so it's industrial farm and lumber and farming. But that airport brings that. And we're on the East Coast, we're most populated in the United States. People are moving off Hilton Inn. I mean, they're coming there, built out, Charleston, Long Island, they're very much, can't get around. So, all those people are coming this way. So, I don't need an airport, but the county does, because the people are coming. You gotta build the future and I volunteer my time to help the county make decisions. And I'd like to thank the members of the council that supported and the stimulating over here of figuring out how to get the money cheap till we get the airport started. And then the federal government will come in and provide the first funds. But when those hangars are built, people are gonna come and they'll pay in tax, and they'll hold people in the restaurant and buy food. And that's how a county grew, was with, uh, airports like that. That's all I got to say.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Ms. Barbara Gray.
Um, I want to say that I'm not against the airport. What I'm against is the county having to borrow two point six, six, six million dollars on one. This gonna cost us, in my figure, the rest of the month payment, the third year is gonna be less by a hundred dollars a month. And I cannot see how that is going to pay for itself. My concern is, not necessarily for me, but for my children and my grandchildren. In third year, I'm dead. And they're gonna get on my property and then they're gonna have to sell it because they can't, they'll pay taxes because of what y'all are planning on me. I don't understand why you got the middle twin paying. Like someone said the other night, start with, start talking. You might be getting a loan interest loan, but still, this county cannot afford to have it. And you keep saying our taxes haven't gone up. I ain't taking long. My taxes has gone up. I would have to check. And my taxes go up every year. It might not be a million, but because the county or somebody reevaluates, evaluates my property, it's costing me. Go up. And they gonna continue to go up. And they gonna go up. And they gonna go up every year. I just don't wanna see people living out of this county because they can't afford to pay taxes. I don't have to sell my property. I worked hard. I worked forty-six years to own what I got. And I don't have to lose it because I can't afford to pay taxes. I'm gonna take things up. My husband's retired and I have a small job. I can afford things more taxes. And one thing I wanna bring to the county's attention, a lot of those groups awareness a lot. My husband owns a two thousand and fourteen Chevy pickup. And yeah, it came down to the first couple of years. But for the last five years, his taxes have been between two hundred and three hundred dollars a year. On a two thousand and four Chevy pickup. We kept questioning. I kept talking up there, talking to the government, the authority. This is what the state wants. The state don't want. How do they do it? I finally got my taxes loose this year, boy. It's about forty dollars. Okay, I questioned it. Y'all got somebody new in there now. And I was told that the girl before her was sticking her tongue. So, I get to reach them back on all this taxes. I'm waiting to see what my two thousand and ten insurance is gonna be. But this is what you learn all year in this city. So, I like, you know, that's all I'm, I'm worried about is tax. Because if county can't pay it, then this will have to come out of tax phase.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Platt.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn speaking tonight. I'm Mr. Eric Rolson. I'm a resident here in Hampton County. Um, we got a lot of trouble down here at the airport. A lot of short-term challenges going through, and I'm still okay long term. There are a couple of others I'd like to make in relation to the, uh, hearing comments about education and park recreation versus the airport. I would see this as an ideal situation. I like to take people, walk the streets down here, expect, like, we can have good education system, good school. It's abandoned. Everybody, uh, has a lot of arts and recreation all at the same time. At the same time, at the airport, one is not free to, uh, we're not picking some way to, uh, accomplish it. Maybe in a different term, about, like, in making the cost factor. This is not a, uh, a terrible, terrible conversation. Even already, we've walked out and ensured we have finished. And even of waiting for this, not by, uh, the government, uh, and. The airport's around us every place. They're all full every morning. And you just wanna, and that would give us an opportunity, have really come, not to mention, have people bring in taxable annual assets into the county. And the county's got people trying to put the problems outside the county. We both called it the airplane eligibility tax. We're trying to gain assets into the county, build the taxable property tax. You get rent, you get property taxes, you provide proof. You go to use the services, restaurants, co-经营, camp, well, bring other industries. That's our airport. The anger, remember that, that the bottom level, I'm not why the numbers are not enough. This is not an arbitrary, not, uh, we're trying to get the minimum threshold to meet the, uh, be eligible for federal funding. And longer not, we don't have an aircraft nation. First, we gotta know. We tend to go, you're full, you're neat, you've got a warrant, a follow-up, a, 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 we just put that through the door. Be able to, the tax period, the penalty, they, they got one from federal and state. So, they can, this is very nice. This is our airport. A long-term goal for getting rid of corporate aircraft. Great industry, businesses in this county, a low level of, of thousands of years. That's a building, two cities, right now, in Spitaling, London. I bet everybody knows that. Spitaling, London, heaven's dependents on corporate aviation. I lived, I was one of the pilots back in nineteen ninety-nine. But we can have corporate aviation. We don't have airports. We couldn't afford to go to Charleston or Savannah, Columbia all the time, in order to get the same thing to, to the reputation. So, we had corporate aircraft. We had even Orson in Allenville. We didn't have that sort of thing. It would be a lot better if, uh, corporate aircraft, uh, come in here and bring your business into this area. They don't have to be looking out of their birth, college campus or, or the S or campus. That's the only reason. These airports around, if you can't around them, can have a nice airport. If they all do. Washington Hampton City, Dr. Lynn, I would say that airport, citizens about to get around that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chip Nixon?
Good evening, council, good question. Fellow citizens, uh, my name's Chip Nixon, I'm in Hampton County Residence, uh, nineteen eighty-seven. And I'm here not to speak, and make a statement, and also, that I'm standing, great that it was, uh, can I put, can I have a couple of questions?
Uh, we probably not gonna respond, you can, if you wanna, uh, if you wanna ask them, we will get the information back to you if you like.
Okay, very good. Thank, well, I can be responding, make a statement. Concerning the airport, uh, I think an airport provides hangars certainly incomplete, it's based in the air, okay? However, it's like a glass half-full, and I follow any effort, we need, we need industry. Here in Hampton County, we need a desperately, over the thirty-three years I've been living here, things we take as accounting, concerning industry, to take one step forward and two steps back. So, I follow any effort that you make to, to bring the economy up in this county, to bring businesses to this county, and I certainly think that hangars and airports are much needed. It would be of much benefit to the county. Our, my concern as a taxpaying citizen is that it not fall on the overburdened taxpayers of this county, which we certainly are overburdened, and we have a reputation for being overburdened, indeed. So, with that being said, the one thing, I did go back and listen to the last council meeting, thank you very much for having that on video, I did listen to it in its entirety, and I did get some of my questions answered. However, there were some questions that I did not hear the answer to, and one was, what is the total, total monthly revenue from, that the hangars will bring in? If you can't supply that for me tonight, then I would like, I would like to have, have that information, if at all possible. I know that's a very simple question, and forgive me for asking such a simple question, but I would like to know what the expected total revenue is, because if you're gonna own and be in a construction business for thirty years, I understand that I've been in building, and I've been in sales, in construction sales for the last twenty years. Lots tend to lean on the side of going over budget, okay? Yeah, we'd love to be able to do it for X amount of dollars, we think we can do it for this, but it always, the vast majority of the time, tends to lean on the heavy side. So, if we could find out what the total revenue from those hangars, fuel sales, will provide, then I think you can put that information out to the taxpayers, the citizens of Hampton County, then they would feel a lot better about this, and probably back you on the back, as long as it's gonna pay for the sale. Because, you know, if you're gonna play, you need to pay. It's just that simple. We all have hobbies, we all have things like, too, we all have transportation, but we all have to pay. So, that airport will be used by people who need to pay for it. It won't be used by ninety-nine percent of Hampton County. However, my hope is, and my expectation is, I know it is yours as well, that those ninety-nine percent will benefit from that airport and economic, uh, growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell, Mayor Russell?
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
This is your Russell, I live in Yumme City, and the coordinator for Hampton County Closer Pots. I'm here again to, uh, bring you great news that I have. Uh, I think I'm days away from the usual warehouse, so there will be a crisis for the children in Hampton County. Uh, without that, things would end up in my house, and that would not be fun. Uh, I'm gonna reiterate, last year, we served about a hundred and twenty-five families, close to three hundred children, collecting sixteen hundred toys. We just had an event at, uh, a good piece of, very proud of the children's family, supporting Closer Pots for their second year. Uh, we did some great, uh, collections of toys. Uh, I don't know if those on the, the cash amount that they, uh, collected for us, uh, but we're looking forward to a great year, because, uh, we've got a private donation of twenty-five hundred dollars in toward already. And, uh, without that, uh, we wouldn't be moving forward as quickly as we are. And again, I appeal to you, you can, uh, with the council's permission, I'd like to put these flyers out in the hallway, in that brochure, uh, folder. Uh, email and website is on there, you go to the website, and, uh, it is the Hampton County Closer Pots website. So, uh, you can be sure that when you click building now, at the top left corner, every dollar, every toy, stated right here in Hampton County. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and have a good, great Christmas, everybody.
I think we've got time for one last speaker.
Mr. Nigel Alexander?
Good afternoon, Nigel, I'm President of Hampton County, uh, and also, I'd be saying what's on the airport. Uh, my sentiment is, some others, uh, uh, of others, um, you know, who I think the airport can, can maybe benefit us, uh, uh, and maybe should. Uh, but my fear is, the risk, uh, you know, last, and we had a discussion a week or two ago, about the structure, you know, we have contracts that were out there, and maybe wrong with the contract, uh, but, you know, my thing was, how long those contracts gonna be? You know, one year, two year, uh, so we're gonna, I don't care what kind of loan you get, you know, our back to the, they give one of the best loan they, you know, no matter how long the loan is, you know, I'm still paying something on that loan. Uh, so we don't want that to come back to, everything tax pay, you know, is already struggling in Hampton County. Uh, and, and as, as you go around the county, you know, there's not much to hear. You know, somebody called me the other weekend, was like, hey, well, man, you know, I heard you talking about the airport, but, um, you know, man, they got something on Facebook, and I'm not a Facebook person, um, like you are going on off set stuff, so, you know, I stay away from that stuff. You know, but they were like, hey, some of those people said, you know, planes, you know, with business. Well, I have all kinds of concerns with my job. You know, I love that plane number, tail number, I'm like, that's a plane game right in Hampton County. So, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't an industry that, you know, for checking, or, you know, hey, it was unknown. You know, they didn't start to fly, everybody got the original, you know, but they couldn't, just as good a movie. Um, you know, and I fly all over the world, you know, I flew in the jail, I watched about a month ago, and from the, from, from the airport out there, to get to my hotel, it probably took me thirty-four minutes. You know, so, when, when we base it upon industry coming in, you know, we have larger cities that surround. You know, I, I even knew, you know, counties that survived without airports, you know, they're amazing, amazing businesses that survived without airports. You know, so it's hard to sell to me that we need that group, you know, that's that being the soul, that is true. Uh, so it's just a concern that I, you know, I'm, I mean, thirty years, I'm forty years, so thirty years I was in there thirty years, you know, but I have young kids in school, you know, I got a, a, a nine-year-old and a four-year-old. I don't want that burden to be on them, you know, I, since I made, um, I don't want that burden to be on them. You know, that's why personally, I said, I'm certain staying in life, wherever something happens to me, to make sure they take care of. So, so a council member, uh, is a body of government, I think we should kinda live and treat it the same way, uh, not cook a burden on somebody else, because it's just that, you know, with the multiple person thing, you know, the thing we had, we're supposed to generate so much income, you know, from the penny tax, from the penny tax. Well, the money didn't come in after we thought. Uh, you know, so now we only have a little bit of money in there, and, you know, we still don't have the recreation, you know? Now we stand today, the airport, you know, twenty hangars, uh, you know, we, we got some good things out there, but once again, it's just a mission, you know, we don't know when that stuff will come. I understand that at the end of the day, if it don't come, we're only gonna purchase that, we're only having this loan. So, at the end of the day, if the people, you know, are not having all the airplanes in the hangar, it has to fall back on somebody, and, and that somebody's gonna be, um, in every other business in Hampton County, and that's what I do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all, sir.
All right. That brings us to item six, approval of amendments. Six point one, October seventh, two thousand and nineteen Hampton County Council Special Meeting Minutes. Do we have a motion to accept the amendments that was written?
Go ahead, Mr. Kim.
Have a proper motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, presentations, seven point one, Representative Shedron Williams, District one twenty-two, South Carolina House of Representatives, regarding legislative updates. Councilman Wade, uh, I'm sorry, I refer to you as councilman again, Representative Williams.
Well, let's do this, first of all, I'm gonna say, thanks a lot for allowing me to come, and I would apologize to council members and, uh, staff, you know, I sat there eight years, not competing with anybody, and, and it gets tough up there sometimes, sometimes. Um, continue to do what you do, and just try to move this county forward, best what you can. So, if there's anything I can do for the safety of this point, um, as long as I'm there, you know, just reach out to me. So, I just wanted to bring some updates of what's going on, and to think that we're gonna be possibly faced with when we get back into session. We're actually, uh, out of session now, but we do have community. I just wanna bring, uh, substance to attention of, uh, County Council, and I spoke with someone, uh, from Southern Carolina, Atlanta, to be here, is the proviso one one, two point one, one, this is the, uh, rural infrastructure education, closing, uh, funds, a hundred and fifteen million dollars that the government put into West Virginia for rural counties, uh, to help with rural infrastructure, water, uh, other expenditures to improve school buildings, that's really not having to be taxed, so I wanna make sure, you know, the body, you know, that we can, look at it rather than, you know, at least apply it to some of, we are qualified by rural county. So, also, uh, I wanted to make sure everybody's aware that we do have an office here, in the building, if you come in, I'm allowed, John is host, is our, uh, special assistant for the delegation. Anything that you have concerning us, or getting order, please, just stop by our office. Couple things we, we need to address coming up real soon, which we're trying to have a delegation, maybe, uh, within the next couple of weeks here in the county, we got a couple of board appointments, but we need to address a direction commission, I think it's one, the CTC commission. Uh, a couple of things that we're looking at, is that request the CTC, like payments, uh, we're working on, and consider changing the process, that goes, like some other counties, those requests coming to the delegation, that they, to the CTC, that they are prior, uh, how they're gonna be addressed. Uh, parks and recreation, there's one, uh, we've, for years, this county's been running on pretty much the same amount of money being requested, and I didn't have to ask questions, you know, you know, our population structure, but at the same time, there's monies, and it's my understanding that there's additional monies, or special projects, you have to put in for, and you could possibly consider. Uh, just for example, over in Colleton, um, out of the blue, that the money that the allocate and spend, since my, right Matthew, she requested four hundred dollars for a community building in Niels, and she had a check of about eight days. So, we need to take out time, if we can, give, uh, uh, local communities, and even the county, you know, some of these things, uh, that we can do with parks and recreation. You know, we are working on, uh, here in the county consolidation, and this is not a delegation directive order, uh, that was suggested, because it's gonna happen, so the two school boards are really working on it. This is not, uh, what, you know, uh, some people have put out, that, you know, we directed that, we suggested, and we stepped out of the way to have a good meeting. But I think in report that, out of the first twelve million, that the county, uh, two schools, uh, basically we get awarded about three, four, five million dollars, and we're gonna cut it in half, once they get a request, for the two sides of needs that can help beginning process of, um, consideration of school consolidation. So, I'm pretty sure both school districts can read that. And, uh, in the near future, once that one is disappeared, we can apply for the school districts, or maybe, uh, for the one school district can apply for the other, one, one of the, like, three quarters million, and then the major, the major one comes up, of what we're gonna do, the structure, facility, thing out there, and that adds things. So, like I said, I just wanna bring you a couple of updates, continue to do what you do, and let's try to move, uh, that forward, okay?
Thank you, thank you, council.
I mean, well, you do it now.
Representative Williams, thank you, boy, you do, man.
Thank you.
Brings us to item eight on the agenda, appointments, we have no appointments scheduled this evening. Item nine, resolution proclamation, nine point one, to state the commitment of Hampton County to enter into an infrastructure credit agreement with Project Flash and/or is designated to provide the general terms of an infrastructure credit agreement to the state, to state the commiss, commitment of Hampton County to place a project property in a multi-county park, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Mr. Strickland, you can have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, this is Council, uh, thank Representative Williams, he left, I was gonna tell him thank you for the, uh, infrastructure fund, we all working on a way to spend it, uh, with the projects in Hampton County next year. Uh, we do have one for us tonight, uh, Project Flash, uh, pledge to create fifty-one jobs and invest one point three million dollars. Uh, and this resolution is essentially the county's outline for the intent that we're prepared to offer, and I will certainly answer any questions, and I would ask you guys to adopt.
All right. If I have any questions for Mr. Strickland?
This is for information only, or you want a motion on the floor to us?
I would like a motion for adoption.
I'd like to make a motion for adoption of, of public, pub, flash, Project Flash, is destined to provide the general terms of an infrastructure credit agreement. Would I be properly reading?
Yes, sir. We have a proper motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item ten, ordinances. Ten point one, third reading of ordinance, we have none tonight. Ten point two, second reading of ordinance, we have no second reading this evening. Ten point three, first reading of ordinance. Ten point three point one, an ordinance to provide for the sale of real property owned by Hampton County, South Carolina, to Project Flash and other matters relating thereto by title only. Was it the pleasure of council?
We would pass it, uh, as stated, Mr. Kim.
We have a motion to pass, item ten point three point one, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to, on to item ten point three point two, providing for infrastructure for special source revenue credits to an infrastructure credit agreement between Hampton County, Hampton County and Project Flash, to further amend the amended and restated master agreement for the establishment of the Quad County Industrial Park One, Park Two, and Park Three, by and among Hampton County, Allendale County, Bamberg County, and Barnwell County, and Barn, and Barnwell County, the MCIP agreement, so as to include additional property in Hampton County as part of the park, providing for the allocation of fee in lieu of taxes payable under the MCIP agreement, and other matters relating thereto. Do we have a motion to approve item ten point three point two? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve ten point three point two. Do we have a proper motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I understand that's, that's be one percent, like, it was when they get a, um, a, uh, something in their industrial part, or some kind of improvement, they get one percent, we get one percent of it, is that the agreement you're talking about?
Mr. Strickland?
This is, uh, yeah, Mr. Williams, this is the old Quad County, Quad Agreement. Um, we've done, um, a few other recent projects, Hampton is the host county, and this particular project, uh, um, Hampton will be getting ninety-seven percent, and the other four communities will be getting one.
That's what my question was, thank you.
All right. There's no further discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eleven, bids, we have no bids. unanimously. Moving on to item eleven, bids. We have no bids. Item twelve, council briefings. Twelve point one, county attorney's update. Our attorney has to step out. Twelve point two, clerk's update. Twelve point two point one, boards and commissions update. Ms. Alene.
Okay. Um, I promised you all that I was going to have the list for you. It will be emailed to you, um, by Tuesday. I do have some questions that are leaving at, at council. Um, also, we had Mr. Brown, who has come in regards to chaplaincy.
But, yes, ma'am. There's Newton, could you get it? I can't hear him, I'm sorry.
Um, and I just wanted to let council know that Hampton County does have a chaplaincy program. And the last chaplain was Reverend Bird. So, I don't know if you all want to, um, contact the Browns, or let advertising, let ministers know that the county does have a chaplaincy program, and you all want to, um, have someone to fill the position. The other thing is, we have some members who resigned from the position. So, those are considered vacancies. Some people never resigned, I mean, resigned from the position, but their certificate states that they continue to serve until an appointment is made. So, do, but they haven't met or haven't attended meetings for some years. So, do you all want to have them still listed, or do you just want them to be listed as vacant also?
Um, I, I, I tend to agree with what you just stated, and until we replace them, you know, they're going to have to be listed as in that seat.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have experience with chaplains, and it's a very good thing. And by real, uh, the forces in the workplace, um, whatever you might consider, the, the family unit's under stress. It's a neutral person that they don't know that he'll sit down, actually, he's served in the past. And I think it's a well, all industry has, large industries have it. I think you testify that it is a viable function, and a very good one. And I would like to see the county get a little more involved in that necessary, especially in today's society, with so much stress in the workplace and as well, particularly about workers, is what I'm saying, or employees. But also, as the need comes, and our commissions, they also need a professional. Uh, I call them sky pilots, but he's not, he is a quasi-judicial sky pilot. But they have served to reduce tensions and stress in the workplace. I would, I would heavily favor asking your permission to proceed with.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Chairman, I, could, uh, address the, could the council?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Newton, uh, on the, uh, what we have for the chaplain, uh, was there any type of, uh, compensation?
No, no.
Uh, so it's more like voluntary?
It was volunteer. The only thing that I found was that, um, it was a training that the county provided that he had, um, requested, and it was a training that they paid for that he attended. But other than that, there was no compensation. Actually, it was a board, it was a chaplaincy board.
Board, oh, okay.
Um, it came from the recommendation for the chaplain, coming from the chaplaincy board and county council.
Okay. We certainly appreciate you finding us.
Quite welcome. And like I said, I just wanted clarification, because there's some members who just stopped attending meetings, but they never resigned.
Right.
So.
All right, well, thank you. You said you'll have that for us this Tuesday?
Yes.
That'll be tomorrow?
Um, Tuesday, when?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
But it is a noble project.
All right, brings us to item thirteen, reports to county council. Thirteen point one, administrators' report. Thirteen point one point one, administrators' update regarding Stanley Building, clearing out the remainder of the building and setting a firm date to have it completely cleaned out no later than eleven fifteen, two thousand nineteen.
Yes, sir. No la- no later than.
We changed it eleven fifteen.
Yeah. Um, everybody's got a copy of this. You see the new format of aviation in, and we got a full-page little article. Um, pretty good article, I think. We had several of them flying in for the Worldman Festival. I think the, uh, quote from, said this new chairman is all about less talk and more action. Getting it done is as much as. So, uh...
Who is this fellow?
Bishop, the chairman. I thought that was kind of, that was kind of neat. That's how they ended the article. Um, the report on staffing, we, and this is two months, uh, don't believe we gave Septembers. So, we gained a basic EMT, a nine-one-one dispatcher, and a firefighter. We lost a landfill equipment operator, detention center officer, a paramedic, and a nine-one-one dispatcher. We also have a copy of what we hand out to the airport commission during their meeting. It's a copy of their last, uh, their last meeting, which has minutes and so forth. And also, it has fuel sales and traffic count. And that has in it for, and we've done this by calendar year, so it has the prior year stats in there as well, so you can look at that. And if you have any questions, just give me a call.
I mean, uh, yes, sir. How many gliders use the airport?
They were kind of regular, but they've moved, actually moved back to Ridgeland for the gliders. Um, in June, we had ninety for the month. Well, that was in June. So, we haven't, we haven't ninety gliders.
How did they, may I ask, you might not notice, how are they propelled into a situation being glider? Who, what aircraft pulls them into?
They bring, they have another airplane that flies in, and they haul the gliders in on a trailer. And that airplane is the pull, tow, defer to the experts back there. Um, they tow that glider, and that's what propels them up. So...
There's no fuel in that?
Uh, for the pull, for the tow plane.
Tow plane.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And they hit, they hit the canteen pretty heavy while they're there. So, that's pretty easy.
Thank you.
Um, but our average for last year was seventy-nine point eight, and this, thus far this year is eighty-seven point five. So, the averages are going up even without helicopter, which we've been pleased to see. I'd like to remind everyone that next Monday is the county municipal meeting. And the additional information on that, the town of Brunson is the host with Yemese, I believe. And the meeting will start at...
Could you give me those dates again, please?
Sir?
Would you give me those dates again?
It's next Monday, the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Right. And, um, the meeting is going to be at the Lions Club in Brunson.
Okay, and six, six o'clock?
Yes, sir. Also, I'd like to remind everybody that, um, downtown and the chamber has requested that we move our Halloween function from the EMS base to Lee Avenue. So, we will be setting up, uh, the Spook Alley next to the theater. And everybody that would like to come and help volunteer, please show up. You, you don't have to dress up, but it's probably advisable.
What the top of that?
Leave it starts at five.
And, and at what time?
Kind of whenever everybody gets tired. I think officially it stops at about seven, eight o'clock.
I have a question going back to the association or meeting of the township. One of, one of the concerns in the, in the budget, and the discussions at the table, and also in the retreats, that it, I haven't yet learned to study all of it, but the relationship of when a felon, and that's when one's arrested, where it's municipal or county, that his Medicare and Medicaid is counseled. That's putting an extreme burden on both entities. And a couple of mayors said they would like to bring this up too, but I'd like the full council to be there to address this. And I think you've been right informative about, uh, these issues that either town, townships pay for initiating them into a hospital and to the jail, or either the county. I don't care which one is arrested, but I, I think it close to a million dollars in, in bills at the end of the year. By the time long-term employers have been there for murder, like we brought up over two years, you know, it really adds up. So, I think municipals ought to be brought up on this, and ask them, what can we do? What, what is there? Because I certainly don't know all of it.
Yeah. Pass that on to the, um, chair of the municipal association, which is, uh, Mayor Bowers and Estle.
I think, I think that's a concern for all of it.
Yes, sir.
You, thank you.
And I, I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody again about the October twenty-fifth concert at the theater, featuring Double Shot with, uh, Vice Chair Phillips. So, um, I'd like for everybody to turn out. Hopefully, it'll be filled, a filled house, and it's going to be the start of a lot of programs at the theater. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Oh, um, Mr. Williams, if you look under the meetings and agenda, I pulled this up out of the council's adopted policy, it does not say workdays. It just says twenty-four hours for meeting nights.
It shouldn't workday, that's what...
I, I pulled it up now, just thank God for Google. Under the code of laws, it just says twenty-four hours.
But we are working to get it out a little earlier. Uh, we've set a new, uh, time to, uh, have it no later than two o'clock.
Well, usually all lea- legal litigation use refers to working hours, not during the weekend.
Yes, sir.
Forty hours. But thank you.
Can I, um, just remind every, agenda items and request to be on the agenda is due by twelve o'clock noon on Monday. And that's from anyone who wants to, um, submit information, including backup materials. So, all backup materials, requests from, um, everyone is due in the office by twelve noon on Monday, prior to the meeting date.
Just the Monday prior to the meeting.
Meeting date, right. Twelve noon.
And that's in your, uh, your policy that everybody should have a copy of, the amended rules and procedures ordinance, the county council.
And again, thanks for pointing that out. Do you have anything else, Ms. Allen?
No, sir, that was it. I was hoping Ms. Alene does as good a job as she can at getting everything together and getting the agenda and everything out. So...
Awesome job. All right, thank you. All right, brings us to item fourteen, executive session. Fourteen point one was stricken. We have item fourteen point two. Uh, do we have a motion to go into executive session now?
Go move.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll give us a few moments, we're going to go to our executive session. And when we come out, you can all rejoin. All right, that brings us to item fifteen, report out of executive session. Fifteen point one, we did not strike that, but no economic development matter regarding Project Flash was discussed. Fifteen point two, contractual matter regarding update on company two proposal. Matters were discussed, no action was taken. Brings to item sixteen, adjournment. Was it a pleasure of council?
Go move.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you all for joining us.
Go in peace.